They're copped out or what's the reason they haven't turned up? Or are they obliged to turn up or did their money just run out from us and they just said they're not coming or what?
Anton.
Yeah, if I come in there, so I I'd understood from when we'd had the the Chair and Vice Chair briefing a week or two ago, I'd taken away from that actually that there had been a conversation. And I thought that Neil had said that he was he was going to be attending and what I took from that was all I needed to do was to sort out a purchase order because our contract with LGSS has finished. And quite rightly and fairly for Neil or anyone else from LGSS to attend the committee would be a a chargeable service and no problem with that. I dropped Neil an email last week and it seems that there's been some confusion in this because Neil wasn't because he hadn't had a reply from one of my earlier emails. Didn't think he was being booked for the committee. So unfortunately, he has accepted an appointment somewhere else and he's no longer able to attend to attend the committee today. So I don't think there's any malice or intent or anything like that in this. It's it's a matter of miscommunication. I would say that nobody from LGSS is able to to be here today. If we need to rectify that and come back to this at a future meeting, then I'm sure we can we can wait for a for a future meeting.
I don't think we should come back to it in a future meeting. I just I was very disappointed that the questions I wanted to answer was to them and not to the we well, to the report. But there's not one officer on here, and I know we have got some capable officers here who could answer those questions because my questions are against our auditors up to a point and I want to know why they've written this in and why they've written that in and I want to know the reasons. Not what's in the report, I read the report. I want to know the background to what they've written in the report. And I can't do that at this meeting. So really, I think it's a bit wasted time to have it on the agenda.
Thank you, councillor Driver. I, you know, agree with the points you're raising that is highly disappointing that they are not attending today. To to expand on what Anton has already informed you of is that I I had, you know, I've had conversations with Neil over the preceding time. And there was no indication from him that he wouldn't be attending. From a personal professional point of view, if I had completed a piece of work, I would want to see that personally finished anyway. And so whether or not the invite had come through the normal channels in the normal time procedure, I would have been earmarking that and looking at the agenda and the calendar for Norwich City Council and wanting to be proactive to support the committee beyond that. But it is a shame. What we do have today is we do have the new internal audit officer Gavin with us. And so from a technical perspective, I think it's still right and good that we examine the piece of work, have due discussion. And Gavin, from his technical perspective, can give opinion, not necessarily insight into the working practices of the the previous officers, but he can definitely interpret effectively some of the results for us. So I I think it's fully valid that we discuss this point and 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 I so I'm very open to the committee at this stage. We've all considered the report. I'd be interested to seek views from the committee on this. So do I have any indications from members? Okay, I'm not seeing any indications. Keith, did you say that you I've got councillor Schmira, which I'll let in in a moment. But councillor Driver, you you said you had some questions. Would you like to propose them or observations to put to the committee, please?
Well, do they have quite a few observations and questions, but they needed to be answered by by somebody with the report. So I'm not prepared to ask the questions. I just press the all it's done is belong in this meeting and I'm not going to get the answer of anyone here who I respect to come back. So sorry, Ben, but, you know, why are we satisfactory this time and not last time? You know, it's just questions in the way they work all this out and stuff. No one here can tell me this. So I can't see any point.
Okay, no, thank you for your observation there, Keith. I'd just like to remind members at this point that we are now live streaming on YouTube. But if you've just joined us, there was technical issues at the beginning of this meeting. But a full upload of the meeting will be available at the end of the meeting. It will be posted up onto the YouTube channel. And to come back on councillor Driver's point there in that specific example of why we arrived at satisfactory, that the report does does explain why that has been arrived at for the process. And I think that that can be elaborated on Gavin. But I respect that if you feel that your questions can't be answered, Keith, then that's absolutely fine. So I will move I will move over to other members if there is anything they wish to consider. And we had councillor Schmira indicating councillor, can I let you in?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. And I must say, I do share a lot of councillor Driver's concerns. I do think it is deeply, deeply disappointing that we don't have a representative from LGSS who drew up this report, who is able to give us some of the details and the information that I think as committee members we deserve. And obviously, this is clearly an important item.
I think we've just lost councillor Schmira there for a moment through technical issues. So I, as I've seen now other members indicate at this particular point, I'd like to draw some of my own conclusions from this and and I welcome any responses from officers that are in attendance. What what my personal first thing I noticed that obviously that we've only received satisfactory this year and that's down from good. And that's a shame that that's happened. And I think that's laid out quite clearly. I think that's laid out quite clearly by the 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 issues that were highlighted through the contract management work that took place last year. From from my perspective, I do and I have mentioned this in the past, that it is disappointing that we have outstanding recommendations still from the the work around whistleblowing in NRL from well over a year ago now. And I draw the the committee's attention to page 18 of your overall agenda. Point four point one point five. And it does say that the internal audit has not had assurance from management that all recommendations made following the review of NRL have been fully implemented. In addition, there's been no confirmation that arrangements for an independent internal audit of the company have been made. Without these key recommendations being implemented, the council has no reliable assurance that outcomes expected of the company are being achieved. Nor any assurance that those governance arrangements and practices operating within the company are in line with those expected by the council. Robust and it goes on later, robust and independent scrutiny and oversight of NRL remains a significant risk. The governance arrangements for this partnership should be subject of a full audit during 2021. So I just wanted to pick up on on those points there. I've obviously had the opportunity to meet via Zoom the new internal audit officer. So I would like to ask Gavin, when we've sort of discussed recommendations and and having implementation of those, how we will proceed to work on that.
Okay, thank you councillor, yes. At the moment, in terms of the NRL recommendations, it's a bad point and it's a point relevant to a couple of audits where the response to actions has been a little bit disappointing, to say the least. I'm led to believe we're expecting a response pretty much now on NRL. And I've discussed this with the chairman pre-meeting with this and the the issues relating to contract management, which are slightly more complex and there's sensitivities around this. What I would normally expect from a limited assurance, as these are the two limited assurance audits in the previous couple of years, is that officers provide an update report to the committee, giving you assurance on what they've actioned going forwards, rather than just a matrix of these are how many recommendations we've made, this is what we've implemented. So I've agreed with the chairman that there on the November agenda meeting, there'll be a separate report or it's two reports or one combined report from officers saying what they've done to address these recommendations. And certainly with NRL, I'd expect those to be fully complete. I can explain it. I've also developing a process generally in terms of monitoring closely actions against audit recommendations generally. Thankfully, there aren't too many high priority recommendations and those are in recent years, they're the only two audits of concern. I am conscious of a couple of other areas that the responses we've been getting since I've taken over have been disappointing, although obviously relating to the COVID-19 issues. So with the new chief executive coming in, he's very keen, very focused on governance, very supportive of audit and keen to get a performance regime in place. As part of that court, a new quarterly regime, there'll be a summary of audit recommendations going to each corporate leadership team meeting. And prior to that, the relevant recommendations summaries will be sent out to each director. So we're working through that at the moment. And then following that, that will be escalated to pretty much each audit committee at the moment till I till I'm happy that it's on a sure footing. The other thing that I will introduce is where we've got what I would call a high priority recommendation, previously known as essential. I will annotate those specifically as an appendix to each audit update. Everything that's outstanding, everything that's cleared from the previous ones. And they will have the dates. If they've slipped, they'll have the dates struck through rather than eradicated so the committee can can track whether these are slipping significantly. And I think there's an important role for the committee to play in terms of making sure that we're on top of that. In terms of the severity of recommendations, it's not a major issue at the moment, apart from those two two areas. But I'm assured on the NRL that actions are near to completion. I think there's the appointment of a non-executive director, which will be underway shortly and that's absolutely.
Thank you, Gavin. I'm going to let in Hannah at the moment, please Hannah.
Yeah, just just to follow up on what Gavin was saying there, I fully support Gavin in in the actions he's taking there to make sure that we're tracking all of those audit recommendations. And I think that'd be a really useful, really useful tool going forward. Just to expand slightly in terms of the NRL recommendations, just to assure the committee that the management team have been working through those over the last six months to make sure that they're addressed. And all of that information will be available to Gavin so he can do his sort of review over those responses. But as you mentioned, obviously, we've been through the process of appointing non-executive directors to the board of NRL and I think that'd be a really positive step forward in strengthening that governance arrangement.
Thank you, Hannah, thank you for that. I would just echo that I can see that Gavin is indicating as well, just let Gavin back in.
Yeah, there's just one one point I just wanted to clarify. I'm following up the audit recommendations on the report. I'm not aware where I've seen it mentioned that request for an independent audit. I've not seen that's not on an internal audit report. So I've questioned off, so I'm not sure where that's come from. I'm following due process, so if it's a recommendation or a report, that that's where it's best set. In terms of future work, my 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 focus this year is making sure that those recommendations are actually actually properly. So whether we do some enhanced follow up work. And I'll explain in November, I'll probably do some work around the capital programme, which will also focus around how we're monitoring the council's exposure to the financial risk on our NRL. So there is some overlap, but I'm not going to redo this year, the same audit was done 18 months ago.
Thank you Gavin and thank you for that clarity. You're absolutely right to pick up on the point that is is made in the report there by the previous internal auditors, where it speaks of of wanting a a proper, full independent audit of of NRL. That that was an opinion shared by myself as the chair. But I didn't feel that there was a consensus of the committee wanting that as a recommendation before. So it's fine as a thank you for the clarity on that point Gavin. I'd just like to touch on a few other points of the the actual report. But if I let in any members that may be signalling, I know that councillor Schmira was speaking before, so and I've got councillor Adam Giles. So if I if I if I let councillor Schmira in, I think he's back in the room and then I'll let councillor Giles and councillor Laura McCartney in.
Yes, thank you very much and apologies. I seem to be having a number of of technical issues, which is rather frustrating. Yeah, I mean, so I don't know how far I got, but basically I do share some of what councillor Driver was saying in terms of his concerns. But there were some questions that I would certainly be very interested in in asking and letting Gavin, Hannah, Anton or yourself, Chair, and maybe be able to to answer them in the absence of someone from LGSS. And could I turn the committee's attention to paragraphs four point six, so four point six one and four point six two on page 11, sorry, on page 20 and 21 of the report, please? In particular, with regards to the the reviewing of the 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 policies that are that are mentioned. So it says, for example, a number of key policies have not been updated within the last three years. Or do not detail who is responsible for reviewing and updating and embedding these these policies. There do seem to be, if you read the full sort of two two paragraphs, there do seem to be a number of concerns about how fit for purpose these these policies are and how they are being reviewed and monitored and and sort of justified. So if someone could maybe answer that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be for Gavin.
Yeah, we're actually doing some review work at the moment on policies and procedures as part of this year's plan. I think there's room for improvement. One of the recommendations, I haven't cleared this as officers, but there might be a role for the annual governance statement to play in terms of having a matrix of key. First of all, it's the the council defining what is the key policy. It's only you can't have three thirty forty key policies, it's got to be those that matter. Where I've where I've worked previously and operating some other councils, they have an appendix of the policies, the key governance policies. So I have a review structure, what the policy is, the responsible officer for reviewing that and when the next review is due. So that kind of works as an additional action plan. And I think that would be something that maybe I could consider getting together for the November version of the annual governance statement going forward. I've had a look at as part of my induction, had plenty of time to go through some of the the policies on the site just to to get a view. Some of them, just I mean, some of them do need updating. Some of them are, I think the review structure is a bit over the top in terms of you don't really need to review like the risk management strategy and policy every year. So I think the whole thing could do with a an overhaul, I think. And I think there is room for improvement and I I would expect that's coming out from the audit that we'll do and which should be reported to the next committee.
Thank you Gavin. I think I'll let councillor Schmira back in. I think he'll want to go on a direct point, but I'm still aware that councillor Giles is waiting and councillor McCartney. So if that's a direct point councillor Schmira.
Yeah, it is basically just to say, yes, I would very much welcome seeing that in November with sort of key recommendations in terms of key policies and names of who will be undertaking those those reviews. I'd really welcome to see that at the November meeting, please.
I I would echo that we are fortunate that we'll be discussing the annual governance statement coming up. But I I appreciate the work that Gavin's doing there. If I let councillor Giles in.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to go to Anton for his thoughts on the thoughts of the internal auditors on the contract management arrangements and the recommendations they've made. And ask for what the timescale is for implementing the recommendations for the essential priority recommendations for contract management. Thanks.
Thank you. And Anton, would you like to respond?
Yeah, of course. So in terms of one of the things I would say on the in terms of the contract management audit was we deliberately picked probably the most difficult, most complicated, highest value contract that we could for this internal audit. There's any number of other contracts we could have picked that we know would have sailed through an internal audit and would have gained no value from it whatsoever. And, you know, to a degree, just ticking a box to say that it had been audited and and everything was fine. So I think in terms of the the audit recommendations, they are being worked on and there is a full response that's been worked up. As a result of some of the things from the audit, there were some of the things that were in train anyway in terms of sort of the incentivisation schemes, et cetera. And I need to be careful not to break commercial confidences here because obviously there's negotiations to to go on with those. Some of those are ongoing anyway. And others of those, I'm certainly involved in meetings pre-meeting this week and then a meeting in about two weeks' time to discuss some of those commercial issues. So the response has been prepared, it's just going through a final couple of stages before it can finally be returned back as the as the agreed actions from the plan. Like I said, I think it was, you know, it was a big complicated contract that we chose for the audit. And we've got some real value out of it because actually, and this is where I always believe that the value of internal audit is, it's not about just telling you everything's fine, you know, it's about looking, finding areas where there's potential for improvement and and working with officers to make those improvements and put them in place. And that's exactly what's happened with this with this audit.
Thank you, Anton.
Just to come back, when the timescale for the implementing the recommendations is put together, would it be possible to and circulate that to committee members, please? Thanks.
Yeah, I'll let Gavin in there. Yeah, thank you.
There'll be a full update report by the service at the next committee meeting. So I I'm awaiting the actions at the moment in terms of dates, but I think the service will be pressing the report to the committee. So that information will be on that report.
Yeah, I just want to thank councillor Giles for for raising that point. It's something that obviously I had been aware of. I had discussed it with officers at the the Chair's briefing. I I did want to see an item come on this to the next committee meeting so we can discuss this more fully. And I just want to pick up on Anton's point. You know, I think it's it's only right that the council have looked at what is a complex relationship contract that the the council have so that we can actually learn from this. And also from the work that we've undertaken with our wholly owned company NRL, there are lessons that we are learning and this is also helping us put together the works moving forward for the joint ventures so that we can get it as right as possible moving forward. So we will have that as an item agenda and Gavin's approach to getting recommendations chased up and and actioned and highlighted to the committee for discussion, we should see that enacted at the next committee. So I'm fully confident that we'll get that. So if I pass over to councillor McCartney.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, my question was related to four point six point two, which councillor Schmira has covered.
Thank you for for raising it and it's good to see that all that all members are, you know, working on the the same premises. For for myself, I just would like to also draw a little bit of attention to four point four, which is the risk management and four point four two of that. The Corporate Risk Register is in need of updating and forwarderrance to the agreed risk management process, including member challenge, should be a priority for the council in the 2021 period. So it's it's in, you know, we've discussed the the risk management strategy that we have in place. We've seen that the risk register is obviously missing some key details. It it does require an update and 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 if Gavin can just indicate to the committee how we'll be working on that in the next year.
Yeah, and this forms quite an important part of the annual government statement plan as well. I'd actually be, I'll probably go a bit stronger than the Neil's report. It's just not functioning, it's not embedded in the in the council at all. So it's getting the corporate registered, but you really need it informed bottom bottom up as well. So there's a lot of work needs to be done on that and it's happening at the moment. I'm trying to coordinate with CLT to get something in place, particularly on the corporate risk going forward. So the chief executive has decided he just wants to start again with the corporate risk. So that's where we are at the moment. Obviously, we're no longer using the previous online system. So there's a new visually, it'll look different when it comes to committee in January. There will be a functioning, there will be a corporate risk register in in January for the committee to review. And I will update progress as part of the annual governance statement progress reports and action plans at the next committee and thereafter, because it's really an important building block. Hand on heart, it's going to take you'll have you'll have stuff there to review. It's going to take a while longer than just one year for it to be embedded and actually fitted fully function fluidly. So I could say, yes, here's a corporate risk register, it's fine. It takes a lot longer than that, so it really needs to be thumbed up into business plan, service business plans and through that. But it's an important element and I see this committee as an important constituent of of monitoring that.
Thank you Gavin for for that. I I appreciate your words on that. It's something that has been a frustration for me in my time on the audit committee. I I fully support the fact that this does need a lot of reworking and needs embedding. And I also appreciate the timeframes that you are sort of putting to to the committee. And we also look forward to seeing the work that you can get started in this cycle for that. And I think it's a good approach from the chief executive to want to to completely review that situation so that we can carry out our functions in a safe manner as a committee. So if do I have any other indications from any members on this item? No. So thank you, thank you everyone for considering the item. I think it was an important item. We we know our disappointment that the the officers that wrote it were unable to attend. And I think we've been able to discuss the key elements of the report. And more importantly, how the council are going to action those points and and move forward from that report and use it moving forward. So we will now, so thank you for that. So we'll now move on to item six of the agenda. And it ties in nicely with what we have been discussing earlier, which is the annual governance statement for this year. So if I hand over to officers to introduce it.
Chairman, as you're aware from previous years, this is a statutory document, required document to accompany the financial accounts and it summarises how the council complies with its code of governance and highlighting any actions or key key areas of changes in governance roles in the year ahead. As in previous years, it's been compiled using self-assessments, which is a series of about seven or eight governance questions to each director. And I'd please say this year they were fully completed. I believe previous years, that hasn't been the case. That's been supplemented as well by the time in my appointment, I've been talking to each director as well to gauge what the key issues are as part of just getting an overview of the council. And it's also been reviewed and discussed by the leadership team and fine tuned. Broadly, it's an update in terms of format on the previous documentation, but updated for, for example, the head of audit's opinion, monitoring officers' review and other changes to governance in that. The probably the key, the key focus is section six of the report on page, on my page, it's 45 on the document page 17. And that's where we've listed the key government issues and actions are required for forthcoming year. So there's three key areas for review. I'm not surprised that the issues relating to COVID-19 features heavily in the document. the issues relating to COVID-19 features heavily in the documentation. And really there, focusing on sort of three, three key areas, referencing the council's recovery blueprint, which is not only supporting the local, rebuilding the local community to recover from from the issues, but transforming the working practices of the councils and modernising the organisation going forward. A key element of that is unfortunately, financial recovery. The council's taken a big hit in loss of income. So as Hannah's report later alludes to, there'll be a full review of the medium term financial strategy. And the council has in place significant savings programmes, both in terms of the short term, but also on a more sustainable long term basis as well. That's happening at the moment. The second key area is the joint venture in sourcing, which a project's well established to ensure that governance around the ventures coming in-house into homey owned company structure are progressing. So there's offices from a number of disciplines looking at that, including head of internal audit and principal auditor. So that's a key element, as is Norwich regeneration limited and fully addressing the audit recommendations, which we've, we've mentioned previously. I would also say that the governance issues arising from that review are being taken account of in terms of informing the the way the structure's going forwards. So as part of my role on as a critical friend on the board, it's just making sure that we're not, I wouldn't expect it, but we're not making mistakes that have been previously made. The third area, as we discussed, is risk management. And that's probably the most for me in terms of the basic building blocks of governance, that's the area that needs a lot of focus on as we've discussed. I will have to say that I will probably make some changes to the main body of the report. Because it doesn't quite tie up with the significant issues that I've discussed and raised. So it's probably just painted a slightly rosier picture than I had intended. So I'll adjust that. Going forward, in terms of status, because of the delays in the accounts, this is a draft document. So invite the audit committee to review that and make any representations to the leadership team as they see fit. It will change. I'm pretty sure there'll be some other, another issue too in terms of the actions. And there will also be an action plan, a fully developed action plan, which I will present with the final document in November. As I've discussed previously, I will also give you an update against that action plan in November and thereafter going forward. So I see it's an important part of the leadership team's quarterly performance review to check that they're doing that going forward. And obviously, as part of audit committee oversight, I would like, would like to get it onto a fitting where it's, it's more of all an organic process throughout the year. I don't think the council's unique to this. I'd like to move it away from set piece at year end where people are just filling out questionnaires. So I'd see, again, the audit committee's role in that and the leadership review as improving that process going forward.
Thank you, Gavin. Thank you for introducing that. I'll take members in just a second. But yes, I really appreciate what you've said there. I mean, I think the annual government statement is a key document in the council's working. And I wanted to focus on it a little bit this year. I did send it around a support document for members about what does, doesn't make a good annual governance statement. And the thing that I drew from from the body of our work here is that there didn't really seem to be action plans in place for those kind of key issues and governance issues. So my first point on that to you, Gavin, would be to say that the action plan that you're drawing up is to be included in the final annual governance statement. And then that would be a template for moving forward, I assume. Can you confirm that? So so that we would be ongoing in having proper action plans in the future years? Yeah.
Yes, definitely. The reasoning for not putting it in at the moment, it's a draft and particularly around the recovery plan, some of the actions and timelines are still being developed. I think there will be some changes before November, but no, I see there will be a formal in a similar as it as there would be for an internal audit report, there'll be an action plan, responsible officer, due date. And maybe, you know, a paragraph on two on each one at every committee till it's cleared.
That's, that's excellent. I do really appreciate that. It exactly alleviates the concerns that I have. I'm now looking for members to indicate on this item. I have councillor Schmira. So councillor Schmira.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. And thank you very much, Gavin, for that reassurance about the the action plan, which I did actually have something, some questions on actually, mainly for this item, but it's also referenced in the previous item as well, where it says that there should be an action plan to improve the governance of key risks outlined during 2020, 2021. And thank you also for referring to pages 45 and 46, which deal with governance issues and actions. It is quite right that obviously COVID-19 and the financial impact that that has on the council is referred to, as is the joint venture in sourcing, which will be a major piece of work and is obviously going to have major implications for the council. I would also say though, it's strange that, because other councils seem to mention the very real risk of a no deal Brexit in their sort of governance issues and actions. And that threat is still very much with us, that likelihood, if anything, is going up, not going down. So I was just wondering why that doesn't feature, given the major implications that that would have on a whole variety of things, whether that's the value of commercial assets to sort of how we sort of get materials and the such like. So could you maybe explain why that isn't referenced in this document, please?
Sure. I haven't got the detailed risks associated to Brexit. That is now on the risk corporate risk register and that's still being populated. So that'd be an issue I can consider with the leadership term in terms of fleshing out any actions in respect of governance of the council as opposed to the risks of Brexit. So off the top of my head, I can't think of specific changes to the way the council's governed, but there are risks associated in terms of how we support the local community and local businesses deal with Brexit. That's been flashed out. If there are any governance related issues, I'm unsure that will be reflected in the annual government. I don't know whether Anton or Hannah wants to come in on that.
I think you covered it quite well, Gavin. I think exactly as you said, it's about whether there's governance issues for the council and quite rightly, as councillor Schmira has raised, there's a number of risks associated with Brexit. Particularly when we've looked at this in the past, a number of those risks impact more on unitary councils or county councils, particularly around social care and those that have port responsibilities and things like that, port authorities. So in terms of, exactly as Gavin said, the risks for us are much more around our community rather than perhaps us as an organisation and the governance of our organisation.
Thank you. Thank you, Anton. I'll just look for any other members indicating at this point. I haven't got any indication. So yeah, I just want to pick up, sort of following up on a point by councillor Schmira there, is that there are different governance statements out there from different local authorities. I thought that area that might in our own AGS would be Brexit, as we've discussed. Monitoring of the capital programme could be another potential area. The the business rates could be another area and also funding, those areas could be considered in the AGS. Now, I'm aware that obviously we, through the draft statement of accounts and through the narrative report at the beginning, a lot of these issues are covered. But as I said, I've seen the ported in other statements. So I'll be interested to know what you think of those additional three points, Gavin, being included.
Didn't quite catch the third one in those, but in terms of funding. Funding. In terms of the business, business rates, I think you said, are you adhering to income shortfalls, et cetera?
Yeah.
And that, that is, that is covered in the financial recovery plan. So there are, will be actions addressing those broadly, such as, I'm sure Hannah will at least say, on short term savings plans and longer term savings plans. So at the moment, it's an exercise to address the shortfall and commercial income, parking income and rates. So that's part of the financial recovery in the first action COVID-19 recovery. So when, when I populate an action plan, that won't just be one COVID-19 recovery plan in place. I'll try and drag out the pertinent points. And then capital monitoring is subsumed in that. It's, that's really subsumed in the the medium, the review, the medium term financial strategy, which will be a separate action line, I'm sure will come to this committee in the future.
Okay, thank you, Gavin. Did you want to come in there, Hannah, or you're not indicating?
No, I just agree with what Gavin said. Obviously, we're covering it in the corporate risk register. I think all of those things are incorporated into there. And as we move through the sort of the business planning process now for 21, 22, we know we'll pick up those and make sure we've got action plans in place.
Okay. Thank you for that, Hannah. So my sort of response to the two views put across is that you know, the annual governance statement is a great, you know, customer facing, resident facing document where we can put a lot of clear information across. And so, you know, I would suggest that we do consider having these additional areas perhaps moving forward rather than detailing that it is covered in other documents. I take Gavin's point about drawing the information out under the heading of COVID. But, you know, these are, these are ongoing risks and carry governance issues. And I think they should be covered in the the annual governance statement. I see no one else indicating at this point. I'm not going to make a recommendation. I see councillor Schmira and I'll let him in at this point. Councillor Schmira.
Thank you, Chair. This is moving on to another point, if that's okay.
Still the AG, still the, no, still the AGS. No, I'm not going to make a recommendation that we vote for them, but members are, you know, have heard my views. And if a member would like to make a recommendation to include those in the AGS, that we would like them in the AGS, that welcome to.
Well, I'd be more than happy to do so, but if I could just, before we stop, before we make recommendations, just have one other point of clarity, if that's okay, please, which refers to page 39 of the report going on to page 40, in particular with regarding incorporating good governance arrangements in respect of partnerships and other joint working and ensuring that they are reflected across the authorities' overall governance structures. Obviously, NRL is heavily referenced in those, in those pages. But I'm also minded by the fact that we're about, the council about to embark on a serious piece of work in the Norwich East sort of regeneration programme, which is the partnership work and in wanting to have some assurances that the mistakes that were made with NRL are not going to be repeated in terms of governance when it comes to that partnership work, which does affect a large proportion of the of the city going forward, please.
Thank you, councillor Schmira. So I think if I kind of summarise what you're saying, you know, you're saying that with the East partnership coming online potentially, that we would like to see how the council is going to be approaching the governance and and action plan around that. So again, that's another one that you are considering to be included in the action plan potentially under section six. If I let Gavin respond to that point. You're muted, Gavin. You're muted, Gavin, sorry.
Played slight ignorance on that in terms of, I'm not aware of the partnership going forward, because I've literally just started. The only thing in NRL, the governance issues were very unique to the company structure that was put in place. So I don't think those issues would be necessarily relevant. That's not to say that the issue shouldn't be considered for conclusion. Perhaps Anton would help me out here.
Yeah, Anton.
Yeah, I mean, to a degree, this is not my area of expertise, either in terms of the actual partnership. I'm aware of it, but I'm not involved in the, in any of the detail of it. So I think all we can do is, it is really is take what the committee is saying today and take that back to colleagues and provide a response back if we need to, or if it's just feedback, if I'm making sure the right governance is in place, I can I can take that back and feed that back to colleagues. I would, I suppose the question I would have is, you know, this is the annual governance statement from last, you know, which covers last year and sort of issues arising out of it and a slight forward gaze. I'm not sure the East Norwich partnership is, was a last year issue. I think that's a this year thing. I appreciate, you know, that there is a section about, you know, if you like, future gazing. But I'm not entirely convinced that this year's annual governance statement is the right place for that at the moment. But I appreciate the comments that have been made and we'll take those back.
Okay, thank you for that, Anton. I would slightly disagree with that. I do think that section six is is, is addressing what is coming forward. I think this is a massive piece of work that the council will be sort of facilitating. We want to do it as best we can. I think, I think there is, I think there is a due possibility that this should be included. So do I sense then on this particular piece of the item that there is a recommendation from you councillor Schmira around?
Can I just ask?
Councillor Driver.
I just ask where we should get this information from, because I don't know nothing about it.
What specifically, what do you know?
What Martin wants to look into next year on the audit committee that are looking into a partnership with the eastern southern, what is this, Martin? Have you heard something because you were chair of a party? This is come from.
I've not been chair of any party, I'm afraid. But as I understood it, when we went through Cabinet and also through council a few weeks ago, there was an item on the Norwich East, sort of, it's a private public partnership looking to regenerate that part of the city. So areas around sort of Phil Hamlet and further north in Cromwell. And looking at what can be done there. And obviously, when you're looking at public money and private money, there needs to be proper governance to make sure that, obviously, one of our functions as audit committee is to get value for money for the taxpayer. And that's why I'm wanting to make sure that the governance arrangements for when that is established and when that does go forward, if it does go forward, that they are done in a way that does ensure good value for money and good governance that is accountable.
Yeah, no, I
That makes sense, Keith.
Well, it do, but we must all say, let's just go even further. We've come all the way round. I mean, Mr Latham is going to be changed. I mean, how far, how far are we going to go into 1942 or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, let me, let me. Yeah, let me come in. Most of this site is in your ward, Keith, and so I'm sure you're fully aware of this project. And I think that the comments that councillor Schmira is making there are absolutely valid. Having foresight in any of these large projects and then putting due planning and governance in place and to consider the process moving forward of introducing the governance is only right and proper. And that we as an audit committee, that is our function. I can't see any reason why we would not want to do our best with such an important and big project. I like Gavin in at this stage as well.
I think it's sensible, Chairman. I think it's sensible. If that's, that's minuteed or I reckon we'll look into it. I think in terms of inclusion, it depends how that's set up, because I've not got the knowledge of how it's set up, whether we're the dominant partner, et cetera. But I think that's something that we can go outside of this committee and look into.
Yeah, I appreciate the way forward that you've suggested there, Gavin. And so that will be duly minuteed and we can follow that up. So, so thank you for that. Just to Um, so, so thank you for that. Um, just to return to councillor Schmira's point about a possible recommendation. I will summarise and see, see if this is what, I, I have made a set of points that I felt should be included potentially in section six, which would include monitoring of the capital programme, uh, and funding for an example. Brexit we see will be covered under the COVID headline as well as potential risks with business rates. So am I right in suggesting councillor Schmira that you wanted to recommend the inclusion of the monitoring of the capital programme and of funding under those, 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 um, potential governance issues and, and action points for section six?
Um, yes, certainly, although I don't know whether I would maybe call them sort of funding and, um, certainly I think the capital programme would be, would be worthy of merit in that, uh, governance issue and actions, uh, section six going forward. Personally, I, I think Brexit and COVID are very different matters, even though they have potentially similar outcomes. And so I would consider that I would like to see sort of Brexit on, on there as well. And, and future, future partnership working would, I would like to see on there as, as well please. That would be my recommendation.
So what I will, I'll propose this then. I will propose each one individually to be recommendations from the committee to be included under section six. I will take each one individually, voting members, if you can indicate whether or not you are happy to have that as a recommendation for inclusion. Um, obviously if we, if it is decided, uh, via, via this couple leadership team, uh, and internal audit officers, reasons why they, they, they don't want to consider that, then they will obviously come back and let us know. So I will propose that to have a second for, for taking these in stages, taking these additional points. So we've got councillor Schmira seconding. Okay. So the proposal is first of all, to include under that section six, a section on Brexit. Do I have members in favour? Please indicate. But one, two, three, four.
Yeah, can I just call names to make sure that I've covered people? Thank you. Um, so it's Laura McCartney, councillor Smazy, so it's one, two, councillor Driver, so three, Schmira four, Stutey five, Price six. Thank you. I'll just take numbers next.
I think you missed, I think you missed me Jackie.
Thank you. That's my concern that I am, yeah. So I've got six or seven then please, yeah.
Thank you. So that's, that's the first one. The monitoring of the capital programme as an additional recommendation to section six. Those in favour of having, uh, recommendation of having that on, please indicate. Yes.
So it's two members.
And against.
So it's three against.
That's four, four against Jackie.
Against. Thank you.
Okay abstentions. Councillor Stutey, thank you. Okay.
So that's lost Chair.
Yeah, that's lost absolutely. Uh, and, um, there was the, um, the inclusion of future partnerships. That was the third one as well. So in favour of having that on the section six as well, future partnerships, all in favour?
That's one, sorry, one, two, three, four, five.
That's five, four against.
One against.
One against and abstentions. One. Thank you for that. So that, so that recommendations have, have been enacted. Before we move on from annual governance statement, I, I just have my final point I would like to raise and then just offer anyone else an opportunity. I just, uh, sort of consulting about annual governance statements that were out there, I did find that, um, some of them would also highlight their sort of specific achievements that had happened over the previous period. Um, so for an example of, of one authority that I looked at was Camden. And although these areas are not all applicable to us, they, they had specific achievements of their work around Brexit, their citizens' assembly work, their climate action plan, which obviously we've just enacted this year, their work around medium-term financial strategy, work around reserves, business rates, the one percent rent reduction for HRA, um, their houses built and also the HS2 development. So what I felt from our annual governance statement is that we didn't really highlight many of the achievements that we had made across the period. So I think at that point I'd like to ask Gavin for his opinion on that, uh, relative to other annual governance statements and having achievements.
Are we talking about Camden? Sorry. Yeah. Um, I think from my observation, the Camden document's fifteen pages longer. So it's thirty-five pages against twenty. So, um, I would argue personally, I think the Norwich document, I, I, I mean, it's basically an update from the LGSS. Um, document is more succinct, uh, and provides clarity. I think the main purpose of the governance document is to, so somebody can just pick it up and get an instant assurance overview on how the council works and what's working effectively. Um, I don't see it as a sales document so much. Um, but there was some achievements in, in a very early draft, but I think they, they became outdated. So we decided to take it out. It's, it's always an issue going forwards. As most audit reports, you always report on exceptions etcetera. Um, I would hope people took from the governance document that Norwich City capital is well organised. Uh, we're covering the main points of, of governance, um, going forward. So I think it's a pretty, I think it's easy on the eye. Um, you always want to get it slightly more, um, visual, which is always a challenge, but it's, it's much in line with, with other places where I've worked. Um, I must, I did struggle with the document you circulated. It's the, you know, it's a struggle to get people to read these things anyway. So I think brevity is the key from my experience.
Thank you Gavin. Thank you very much for that assessment. Um, I think that's a fair assessment that you put forward there. Um, I would just like to see if there are any opinions on that point that I've raised from members. Looking around, not seeing any indications. Um, yeah, I, I think it's a fair point. And, and as you said, we had something before. The doc, the document should be succinct. It should be, uh, people should be able to pick up and read it and use it. I do think it's, you know, I personally do think it's worth having these, the previous achievements, how we've actually tackled issues and how, how we've mitigated them, how, how we've worked well through those issues. Um, I don't feel that there's a lot of support for having an additional inclusion into this item today. Gavin's indicating.
Well, what I would, the point I would make as well, there were no actions on last year's document. Um, which is a little bit surprising. I think going forwards, if we've, if the council has four or five actions, then that naturally lends itself to including the achievements in addressing those issues throughout the year. So I think what the point you're making is extremely valid. Um, it's just, I think it lends itself more to this is what we said we were going to do during last year. This is what we've done.
Yep. Gavin, I really appreciate that. I think that one of my focuses has been this year in, is on the annual governance statement. That's why, uh, perhaps, um, you know, the, we didn't have those action points in place last year. I think that the, um, I think the point that you raised there by saying that we, that will have a natural, the action points we make this year will naturally lead into achievements potentially for next year i- is, is sound. And so obviously the work that we're doing this year is informing that document. So those are my last observations upon the annual governance statement. Do I have any other indications from anyone else who wishes to speak on the item? No, thank you. So we have, um, so we will close that item, uh, and I thank the, everyone involved on that. Um, I'm noting that the time now is coming up to quarter past four. Um, we've been just over an hour or so into this meeting. We're approximately about halfway through the agenda. Um, I would like to suggest to members that we have a, a very brief five-minute recess. Um, if members are supportive of that, please raise your hands. Yep, I think that's unanimous Jackie. So, uh, just to, so we will take a short five-minute break now. Just to remind members that this is being broadcast live on YouTube. Please, uh, switch off your cameras and your microphones during the break and we will recommence in five minutes. Thank you.
I can't get in Jackie. Can't hear you.
We can see you councillor Driver.
Councillor Driver, we can hear, see you and hear you. Can you hear us?
I'm unmuted by the house. You stop me, you jaggy con to this. Or Stuart, have one of the two.
We can hear you and we can see you.
Hold it. Well.
Councillor Driver, have you unpressed the, um, there's a little sound button? Stop vid, have you unstopped that?
I can't see a square where I am.
Your videos work. Can you hear?
Yep, fine.
You're fine then, you're back on then, okay?
Uh, okay.
Keep, keep trying to sharing your screen. Yeah councillor Driver, sharing your screen, can you?
Hold it.
It's a lovely picture, that's a very nice plant.
Is it? Okay.
Um, you need to, um, there's a little sign at the bottom of your screen, share screen, you just need to undo that. And then you'll go back to.
Excellent. Okay, I can see that. That's all met back in the room, so we will recommence the audit committee meeting. Excellent, and I think councillor Driver is, is working fully excellent, so. We're moving now on, which is the draft statement of the cap. Months for nineteen and Shmira will hand over to Hannah to introduce the item. Thank you.
Thank you, and can I just start off by introducing a new face to the committee? That's Annabelle Scholes, who hopefully you can see somewhere on, on your panel of faces. Annabelle's joined the finance team with us on an interim basis and she's been really pivotal in, in leading on the statement of accounts. This year, so big thank you to her. The plan is that we will just hopefully put some slides up. Just to run you through some of the key points within the narrative report and the statement of accounts and then open up to any questions, so. Technology permitting, hopefully Annabelle can share her screen and we'll just run through a couple of slides.
Okay. You see that now?
Yeah, brilliant. Um, so just a bit of an introduction, so there have been some changes to the timetable that we're required to produce the statement of accounts by. Um, for this financial year in light of COVID nineteen, so we've had some revised regulations. And that mean we're now required to produce our draft accounts, annual government statement and have those on the website by the thirty first of August. Really in recognition of the, the impact of, of homeworking and the other requirements on the finance teams at this point in time. And so first of all, to say it's a big credit to the finance team, I think. And all the budget managers and other people around the organisation that we've been able to complete the statement of accounts and have those up on the website. And in, in July, well ahead of, of the new kind of regulate, regulation deadline. And if you just pop us a long one Annabelle. And so just as a reminder, what we've got here are the draft unaudited statement of accounts. That incorporates the narrative report and we've already talked about the, the annual government statement that Gavin's presented. And just as a reminder as well, that we are required to produce consolidated group accounts. Which include the results of our wholly owned company Norwich Generation Limited. That's due to the sort of the size of Norwich Generation Limited and it being sort of material to the council from a group perspective, so. We have their single entity accounts and then we also have consolidated accounts that incorporate those results. So the narrative report, just as a reminder, sits at the front of the statement of accounts. And it really is a sort of a resume of kind of what's happened in the year. We talk about the council strategic priorities, the local and national context that we kind of operate within. And then more specifically around our sort of medium term financial plans. And the key risks to us as a council going forwards and a lot of those touching the things that we've been talking about already. Obviously, we've had to reflect in the narrative report this year, the impacts of COVID nineteen on the council. And our response and sort of future forecasts. It's worth noting that because of the timing of the lockdown, actually, the pandemic's had very little impact on our nineteen twenty financial statements. In terms of our, you know, expenditure and income in last financial year. But obviously what we, we recognise in the narrative report is that we'll begin, we'll see the impacts of it in full in the twenty twenty one financial year. And the narrative report sets out and draws on some of the other documents that you, you've seen, so the blueprint for recovery that went to cabinet back in, in June. And also sort of the, the financial update that went to new cabinet earlier this month. What the actions that we're taking as a councillor are as we work through that. It is very uncertain at this point in time, as we work through both sort of. Updating our forecasts and understanding the government support that we might be receiving. The narrative report also touches on our financial and KPI performance. And then goes into a bit more detail to explain some of the kind of key financial statement figures. And in the remainder of the document. And so just as a bit of a reminder, and this is shown in the narrative report, we talk about the, the outturn. For against the budget for both general fund and the HRA. And I won't go into this in any great detail because obviously we've taken a, a report to cabinet earlier this month that, that. Goes into all of the individual variances and the overall position. But just to say that from the general fund, we had an underspend in nineteen twenty of just under three point four million pounds. And some of the key items within that, so we had just over a million pounds worth of underspend on our external borrowing costs. And that relates to us not needing to go out and borrow externally for some of the commercial property acquisitions that were, were made during the year. And then we also had a significant underspend in terms of our revenue contribution to the capital programme. And that was a conscious split to fund some of our capital programme from our capital receipts rather than the revenue budget. And what that enabled us to do has been to make a number of transfers to some of our earmarked reserves to help. And increase those reserves which are going to be important for us as we move through into twenty twenty one and we see the impacts of, of COVID nineteen. So you can see from there, we've increased our levels in the commercial property earmarked reserve and that's there to help us. To kind of mitigate the impacts of downturns in, in the commercial property rental streams. We've also put additional money into our investor save reserve and that will help the council going forwards to. Make the investment it needs to realise some of its longer term sort of objectives around service transformation. And we've also put additional money into the Norwich Generation Limited earmarked reserve. To help offset some of the financial risks associated with the company and its current sort of financial position. And so you can see that overall what's happened is we've, we've reduced our general fund reserves by just over two million pounds. That was very much in line with medium term financial strategy, but we have put some of that money into specific risk areas highlighted there. Moving on to the housing revenue account, so we had an outturn underspend for nineteen twenty of just under two million pounds. One point nine million pounds and of that, we've, we've transferred a million pounds into the investor save reserve for the housing revenue account, so also. They have the ability to make sure that they can, the housing revenue account can invest. In projects going forward to help, help sort of transform that service and make sure it's for purpose. And so what that leaves is an increase in the gen, the HRA's general reserves of just over three million pounds from nineteen twenty. And so I'll hand over to Annabelle now, just to talk you through some of the, the statement of accounts figures and how they link to those figures we've just seen on the budget out turn.
Yes, I, I hope you don't mind, but what we haven't done is going to take you through each of the main statements. Because actually at this committee today, you don't need to approve the accounts because that was one of the changes that was taken through some of the accounts and audit regulations, so. It's for an information sharing, so what we've tried to do in the, the following slides is focus on the key changes that you'll see within this set of accounts. But when we come back in November, there's a potential that we'll take you through the statements in, in more detail, but. We'll talk to you more about that later. So the budget outturn and the statement of accounts do provide you with slightly different figures. And the difficulty with explaining this sometimes is. We have to protect the council tax from actually increases that are not relevant to actually day to day expenditure, so. For us as a local authority, you won't see the cost of any revaluation actually hitting the council tax when you're setting your budget. So we do what we call reversing adjustments below the line in the statement of accounts and actually take. That out, so you get a neutral effect. Now that would be different to something like a, a business where, for example, you would have a depreciation charge go through every year. And that actually hits the company from a, a INE and profit perspective. So this slide here is just giving you the background to some of those changes. And as we, we go through more, we'll, we'll see what they are, but our requirement is to comply with the SIF code of practice. And that's very much what the accounts presented in that format. So there are the core statements that we have, as well as the group accounts that follow. So we have a, an income and expenditure account where basically we show all of the in and out movements on all of the services. We have our movement in reserves and as Hannah taken you through earlier on the revenues. Slide, it shows how we've actually contributed some to, towards some earmarked reserves. We've taken a little bit out from the general fund reserve, but we've put money into the HRA. But this movement in reserve statement actually takes you through all of those adjustments. If you wanted to reference it in the hundred and fifty page document that you've got, the statement of accounts. It is on page ninety two of your, your pack of papers in, in the committee papers, that movement in reserves. The balance sheet is what provides that snapshot of the net worth of the council and it's a positive move this financial year with the net worth. Moving up to seven hundred and four million pounds. So that's an increase for you from eighteen nineteen set of accounts, so. Even in these challenging times at the moment, you're seeing a positive movement on your, your balance sheet position. The cash flow, I think, is a statement that will become more important to the organisation as it progresses through COVID and obviously understanding. What's the difference between a budget position and a cash position? But again, the council has taken some really positive steps to start reporting on cash flow movements now so that we understand when. When your cash could have potentially run out or would run out if we don't get any more movements in relation to funding. So they're the core statements. So on the next couple of slides, we're just going to give you the big changes that we've got this year. And the cost of services within comprehensive INE is where we start to see some of the movements that aren't actually cash movements. But are obviously there and can be seen by the public through the, the accounts. You're actually looking like you've got a deficit position of eighteen million pounds in nineteen twenty compared to ten point three eight in eighteen nineteen. But actually, that is a reflection of an HRA revaluation. And as I explained earlier, it's something that gets reversed out, so it doesn't actually hit the taxpayer and your local community. But it is something that's important we reflect when we're looking at the value of the assets on the balance sheet. So that's kind of an important figure to understand how it's moved. But it's also important to understand that it is not a cash movement in that respect. The next line that we've sort of highlighted from the income and expenditure statement relates to the financing and investment income. Now, the big change here is an impairment that's been put through a four million pounds relating to the council's loan to the Holy Anne subsidiary. This then appears again in the balance sheet because we need to reflect it in relation to the loan that we've actually given to that company. But we felt it was important to highlight it to you here. So the assets on the balance sheet have increased with the forty million pounds investment in, in investment property. So that's where some of the positive movement has come from. But also you'll see on there, you've got your long term debtors position, which is again, is where you see the other side to that impairment. Where you actually have invested or lent no regeneration limited nine point four million. But we've had to do the provision in relation to the four million pounds. Moving on, we've had a look at the liabilities and in last financial year, you did actually take some external borrowing to the tune of twenty million. So you actually see that your debt position has slightly increased. But I thought it was important to highlight for you that your financial resilience is still there. Your general fund reserve, even though it's reduced slightly, is still standing at nine point five million. And also you've got the HRA balance that we mentioned before of thirty four million. The other main section of the accounts goes on to the group accounts where we do actually consolidate Norwich regeneration. There's a couple of points that have been highlighted here in relation to the first phase of Rain Park that was delivered in last financial year. And then also around the retained losses that the group presents. But again, here you can see that the loss is actually offset by the long, long term assets of three point one million. And some work in progress that the company's got of five point seven seven million. So that's a whistle stop tour of some of the main statements, but as I said before, we didn't want to take you through the full detail. Because that will really follow once we've got the audited accounts that come back in November. The next step for us is in relation to the public inspection. We've now put on the website the notice to inform the public that they can notify us and look at the accounts if they wanted to with any questions. Just so you're aware, we would normally allow people to come into the offices and, and look at the accounts if they wanted to with us. But we were doing it more through an online email system to start with and then depending on what the query is, we'll depend on how we respond back. And take them through their inquiry. We've got ongoing audit work, we were in one of the early phases of the Audit Commission's approach or Audit Commission, how did I say that? I do apologise EY, in relation to how EY have phased the audited audits over the summer. And we braved it and I'm going to say braved it because. The fact that we've managed to get the accounts ready and submitted at this early stage, as Hannah explained, we did have longer to do this. We could have had until the end of August. We have started the audit very, very early on. We're not the first because the pension funds are being looked at first, but we are in the second slot. And fundamentally, we're well through the audit now already. What, what is happening though is none of us will get our audit opinion until all of the audits have been completed. So this is no reflection on anybody whether you've done really well or really bad, it's just where you were in that phase of the audit. So fundamentally, we won't be bringing the audited accounts back to you until the twenty fourth of November. But the, the, the current deadline is the thirtieth of November. So that's the whistle stop tour from the presentation. If you're happy, I'll, I'll stop sharing or is there any particular slide maybe somebody might want to go back to?
Thank you for introducing the item Annabelle and Hannah. Do, do any members? Because obviously I can't see members, so if we could take the screen down and then if there, if at any point members wish to see a slide again, we'll, we'll call it, call it up. At a given time. So interesting. That you, initially that we won't be going through the, the main statements today. And, and that's down to procedural changes. Yeah, I know in point. One of the, there is no requirement for the committee to approve the draft financial statements, however, the unaudited accounts are presented to the audit committee for review. So we, we are, is our opportunity to, to review those as well, so I do think at any points. That members wish to do so, I'm sure officers will be on how to answer. So looking for indications and I see that councillor Driver is indicated, councillor Driver.
Yes, thank you Jake, can I just ask one of the accountants on page ninety five out of two hundred and sixty eight. About cash flows, are we worried about the cash flow from, from last year? Of these instances counts, that increase or decrease in cash, with cash equivalents?
And so I think we have to look at two things in tandem here, so one is how our, we have two different sort of classifications, one is our cash and cash equivalents, that's our very short term cash. We also have short term investments, which is another category on the balance sheet and we kind of need to look at both of them and how they've moved. And so whilst our cash has gone down, our cash and cash equivalents, our short term investments has increased. And so overall, there is a slight decrease in our cash position. And which does reflect the fact that we've been utilising some of the, the reserves, you know, the cash that we have to fund commercial property acquisitions. But we still have a significant value across both of those two categories. And we're managing that on a, on a, you know, weekly basis as, as we look at the impacts as well as of COVID nineteen, so. So no significant alarm bells, but it will move just with timing.
How far should, how far should this committee start being worried about this is really turned round? If we're actually spending more money than we did last year?
So in relation to cash flow, sorry Hannah, if you don't mind me just mentioning that because. I'm supporting the team in looking at the treasury management activities at the moment. And what we do on the day to day cash flow is actually look at a minimum balance of ten million pounds. And that's when we take an appropriate decision as to whether we needed to go to the market to borrow. But what you can't actually see on the face of the statements here as well is actually. We have already chosen to use some of our cash to fund our capital programme and it's called internal borrowing. So we do have the opportunity to go to the market to borrow for capital expenditure that we've already incurred. But what we actually do is take a positive decision not to borrow that externally because previously, with the interest rates being as they are. You would be paying a lot more if you borrowed externally than you would by using your own cash reserves. So, you know, there is approximately seventy million pounds and that's a very round number and I haven't given you the accurate number of what we've internally borrowed. That we can actually replace before we'd need to get into anywhere near of a concern, but from a day to day management, we, we don't want our balances to. To go below ten billion and we're nowhere near that at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Driver. Do I have any indications from any members about this item? Okay, just looking around, I'm not seeing any. Councillor Charles and then councillor Shamira.
Yes, thanks to Hannah and Annabelle for preparing these so promptly, that's, that's fantastic. I just wanted to highlight on page seventy two of the full paper seventeen is the. I just want to highlight on page seventy two of the full paper seventeen is the statement of accounts. Top of point nine, it says eighteen nineteen statement of accounts. Changed to twenty nineteen twenty. And and just on whether we whether we go through the financial statements in full at the unaudited stage as the audit committee. Is that a one year change in policy by the government to reflect the circumstances? Will we go back to considering them in full next year? Thanks.
Okay, so I do apologise. I didn't mean to say that you don't have the opportunity to review them now. It's just in the presentation, we chose them to take it to a level where we were just talking about the variation. Previously, what you would have had to have done is approve the accounts at this stage prior to submitting them to audit. But that requirement has now gone and I apologise. That's what I was referencing. I didn't mean to imply that you, you know, we can't go through them in detail. But because of that change, we and the the length of the agenda, we thought we'd take it up up a level and just give you the differences. But of course, you can ask and go through the statements if you'd like us to.
And is our responsibility for approving them just removed for this year or permanently?
So the change in the accounts and audit regulations have changed it permanently that you approve it post audit. And I think that's a really positive move that was taken because all companies do it that way. You don't normally approve a set of accounts pre to audit because you as the the committee get the opportunity to get the understanding and learning from the external auditors at the point you actually approve the accounts.
Thank you, Annabelle. Thank you for the points raised there, Adam. So clearly, you know, we can discuss any element that is made clear. I'll let councillor. Shamira in at this point.
Thank you very much, Chair. And yeah, thank you very much for this very comprehensive report. I'm not going to pretend that I understand every part of it, hence my couple of questions that I'd like to to ask. Could I turn everyone's attention to page thirty nine of this particular report, page ninety four of our agenda documents? Which deals with the balance sheet and the changes between twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and then twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I suppose this is probably a question maybe for you, Hannah, here. There do seem to be considerable fluctuations in certain key areas. Now, you mentioned, for example, in investment properties. But just having a cursory glance down there, we're talking about several tens of millions of pounds, for example. Moving in the other long term liabilities, long term borrowing and the and the such like. And I was wondering, is that normal for a council to have quite so much fluctuation in the between years on on this?
So if I just pick up on a couple of the examples, so I think you're you're right, the two biggest movements really are around or three biggest movements are around the purchase of investment properties. And we know what's driving driving that in terms of, you know, new new additions in the in the financial year. We've already mentioned that related to that is that in that increase in in our long term borrowing. And that's the twenty million pounds movement that we we referenced where obviously we've taken, we've made a conscious decision to take some additional borrowing, you know, to help fund the capital programme. So that very much will move in line with sort of decisions about our kind of capital expenditure. The other long term liabilities, what what's what sits in there is our pension liability. So that's based on actuarial valuations. And unfortunately, this is a bit of a dark art, I think, actuarial valuations. And they do they do move unfortunately on on a regular basis. One of the reasons it's moved so much this time is they they work on a sort of three year valuation cycle of the pension fund. And so they revisit and and do that valuation on a on a triennial basis. That valuation took place during nineteen twenty. And as a result, they updated a lot of their assumptions around kind of the longevity of of the members of the scheme. And the assumptions around kind of salary increases and discount factors. So that is why we have seen a significant movement on that. And just referencing back to what I was saying about some of these movements that we don't have an impact necessarily on our council tax and and our general fund balances. That is one of those movements. So it's a kind of a a paper based movement to comply with accounting standards. But isn't a sort of a driver of our revenue reserves.
Did you want to come back there councillor Shamira or are you happy there?
Yeah, very, very happy with that answer. I must say, I I am surprised about the the pension fund one in particular with regards to. I think it gets referenced in item forty four a bit later on in the in the document to have declined by thirty five million, which sounds like an awful, an awful lot. I'm no no expert in in the sort of demographic changes, but I would have thought that the opposite would have been true. And that kind of seems to account for a lot of what seems to be the the increase in the in the total reserve. So I've just got to I'm a bit bit surprised about that one in particular. And when it comes to the actual sort of auditing of the accounts, and again, forgive my my ignorance here. Is it that there is a sort of with the external auditor, is it that there is a sort of deep dive in a particular area or series of areas? Or is it that they sort of look through most things and give a sort of general guarantee that most things seems to be all right? Or do we get to choose that, please?
It might be worth parting that question just for the external audit plan, which is the next item. And and that I think Mark will probably talk you through sort of their testing approach and how they they kind of calculate materiality and where they focus their work. So happy to, rather than me make up an answer, it might be worth hearing in that directly for me, why as part of the next item.
I'm I'm happy to wait for that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you, Martin. Do any other members have any points they'd like to raise at this moment? I'm I'm not seeing any indications. So I'll jump in a little bit here and just say, first of all, thank you very much for getting this together. Thank you very much for the narrative report at the beginning. I think that that helps to explain quite simply what can be for 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 many people who might want to view this in the public as quite a complicated document to to understand. And I think it breaks down the information quite clearly. Well, a couple of observations that I from it and to jump in at any point, Hannah, and correct me when I'm wrong, not if I'm wrong. But so I one thing I noticed is that the cost of services seems to have have increased by eight million. Would that be right? And maybe if you make a few notes, maybe come come back on me. And and see and explain why, you know, where that how that's transpired. What I would have known, the general fund balance has obviously decreased since March eighteen, it was standing at around thirteen million. March nineteen, it was eleven point five and March twenty was down to nine point five. Now, obviously. Some of this is to earmarked reserves. And it's interesting to note in the the earmarked reserves how they increased quite significantly for commercial investments and also. For NRL, very, very small amounts around the March eighteen period up to sort of four million and two million respectively. I'd be interested to to know a little bit. More about how you testing the 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 strength of those reserves across the next year. And 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 that would be, I'm sure, forming a part of your your budget work. So, yeah, I mean, if if you'd like to just sort of come back on the the cost of services there and the and and your reaction to the general fund balance. And and to give an indication to the committee where you feel the general fund balance could ultimately sit and still be secure for the council.
So if I start with the first question around the cost of sales, so on page. Can find it out on page seventy four. We do of your pack, we do try and sort of explain some of those key key movements in the income and expenditure statement. And yes, we've moved from it's about eight million pound movement in the cost of sales. But the majority of that movement is is related to in year valuation loss on the council's HRA dwellings. And so every year we go through a process of valuing our HRA properties and they will move. We've got a we've got over sort of seven hundred million pounds worth of social housing. And so an eight million pound movement on that is not actually a significant change in the valuation, but we have to reflect that back through the accounts. And that's another one of those adjustments that isn't doesn't affect sort of the HRAs sort of general balances. It's an accounting adjustment that we have to reflect through. And that's why we go through that process of trying to sort of say in in the INE statement, these are this is our position from an accounting basis. But we reflect that back into what actually has an impact on our kind of reserves and budgets through the expenditure funding analysis. So it is just worth bearing in mind, there's sort of figures that sit in the in the income and expenditure statement that aren't kind of real for the purposes of reserves. That is one of those types of things, but it is driving that movement for nineteen twenty. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I'll move on to the reserves then. Is that right?
Yeah, please, please.
And so in terms of the the general reserves, you're correct that we have reduced those over the last couple of years. But it has really been about trying to up specific risk reserves. So some of those earmarked reserves, you've mentioned the commercial property one, it's it's setting that money aside. That's a choice. We could leave it all in a general fund, general reserve and just have one sort of big. Kind of risk allowance. Actually, what we've chosen to do is make more specific pots of money to to respond to risks that we're aware of. So one of those is obviously just holding additional commercial property that comes with an additional kind of risk around those income streams. So that's why we've made the conscious decision to build up that reserve that is kind of isolated and ring fenced for that purpose. The same applies to Norwich Generation Limited and making sure we've set that money aside. So it isn't factored in to sort of when we're looking now at the impacts of Covid nineteen, we've already set those specific reserves aside. And we're not sort of touching those for any other purpose because we know there's there's continuing risks there. And as Annabelle mentioned, we've got about nine and a half million pounds worth of general fund reserves. That is a relatively healthy balance, but we do know that there are lots of challenges ahead. So we've got to set a prudent minimum level when we set the budget and that was around four point two million. When we set the budget for twenty twenty one. So you can see we've got a significant amount of leeway between where we are now and the minimum that we would ever want to hold. And that doesn't factor in all of those other earmarked reserves that we have. So it's a it's a process that we're going through at the moment, trying to understand kind of what reserves we may need to utilise this year to offset those impacts of Covid nineteen. But where we can minimising the use of those as much as possible by looking for in year savings to preserve those reserves so that we continue to be resilient going forward. So at this point in time, it might well be that we need to utilise, you know, two or three million from our reserves in this financial year. And that won't leave us an an unsustainable level. But it's work that is ongoing to make sure that we're we continue to review those on a regular basis.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you for the clarity on the the use of reserves. I just look around for any members indicating. And not seeing any. Just just a small point for myself, provision of service. And I noticed that the the deficit of five point eight million in nineteen twenty, where there was a surplus of two point one the the previous year. Could you elaborate a little bit more on 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 that fluctuation? You're muted, Hannah, sorry.
Apologies. So again, partly that that line is a subtotal of all of the lines before. So that incorporates the movement we've already talked about in relation to the HRA revaluation movement. And the other couple of factors in there is within the financing and investment income line, you can see that's that's moved from eleven million to fifteen million. That's because it incorporates that impairment that we talked about on on the loan with our wholly owned company. So they're probably the two big driving factors in that movement.
Yeah. And so for so a point for clarity for that is that it is picked up later in the documents and and in the notes that there's effectively four million put aside. For the potential risk of the failure of the wholly owned company NRL in failing that that we surmise that there there's high likelihood that there would be a failure to be able to repay that amount.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's about the loan balance. It is what it's saying is that there's an element of that loan balance. That the company may not have the assets to be able to repay to us in the future. On the prudent side, we have to recognise that risk upfront in the accounts and that's what it reflects.
Yeah, absolutely. And that is a prudent action to take. Just just to just to talk, I mean, it is it is it's a it's a weighty report. I do find that the actual notes section that follows the actual statements is very useful as well. There's a lot of detail contained within that and I'm sure that members have read through that. And points that I noticed that in note thirty three, it shows that the car park income is around six million pounds for for Norwich, which produced a two point one million pound profit. Also, what I found interesting was corporate estates produced a. Four point income and approximately one point four million pounds of profit. But I just wondering if you can elaborate on what corporate estates are for the committee's benefit.
That's sort of all of the 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 property that the council owns and rents out commercially. So that would incorporate all of the all of our building holdings, including Norwich Airport Industrial State.
Thank you for that clarity. I did. I did find it very interesting reading note thirty seven, which was reference the corporate leadership team pay structure. And that. Had gone hundred and fifty five thousand pounds to turn to four hundred and fifty nine thousand pounds that year across the two years. And, you know, and just to put that in a context, when when councillors. They are basically eight hundred three, six thousand three hundred and eighty, it does show that councillors are here committed for for their residents and and not earning vast sums of of money. And it's useful for residents to be able to see that information out there. I did notice that the the two redundancies that had occurred. Equated to two hundred and seventy seven thousand pounds in payment and, you know, and and I'm sure that's absolutely proportional to the job specifications. But it's obviously a large amount of money. What I noted on note forty five, page one. Six five regarding discretionary benefits. And I'm and I was just interested to understand more. Discretionary.
Sorry, I lost you a little bit there. It was that note forty five, sorry.
Yeah, note note forty five discretionary benefits. I I didn't fully understand the context of that. And I just want I wanted to if you could, if anyone could explain what that actually is.
In effect, that's all in relation to our pension pension benefits that the council offers through the local government pension scheme.
Yeah, okay. So, all right. Yeah. So just the final points for me, I I might be right in saying that we had an increase of borrowing of thirty eight million pounds. In that in that cycle of nineteen twenty, whereas in the eighteen nineteen cycle, that was around about eighteen million pounds. And obviously, at the same time, we've had the investment property increase to forty three million pounds, I believe, from twenty million the previous year. So I assume that that is a sort of a direct correlation there, Hannah.
So I was just going to follow that. Are we talking on the balance sheet again? So what we've seen in terms of our long term borrowing is an increase of twenty million pounds. And and we've seen an increase of forty million pounds.
Yeah, no, I thought our overall increase to borrow is thirty eight million. But is Annabelle signalling that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, it's the capital financing requirement is the figure you picked up there, Chair. And fundamentally, that's the figure that represents the amount we could need to borrow to cover off all of the capital investment that we've done. So there is a correlation in the change in asset value and that increase in the capital financing requirement. But as I mentioned before, we haven't chosen to borrow externally to that full extent. So we borrowed the twenty million externally. But we could have been done further borrowing, but we've chosen to use our internal balances. So that thirty eight million is the increase in the CFR, I think, Hannah.
Oh, yeah, that would make sense. Thank you for explaining that. I think note note four is just the final thing I I I sort of. Was looking at and it was it was around the the assumptions of uncertainty. I don't know the page number if someone can shout it out, but I thought that was quite an interesting section.
Absolutely. So it's a key note that we we have to include in the accounts and it's looking at all of the areas where there is kind of kind of estimation that's involved in in putting together those figures. And it highlights a number of areas. And I'm sure our colleagues at EY will will come on to talk about some of those as part of the audit plan. And but obviously, there is additional work that we're likely to need to do this year. We flagged that up in the cover report. Around our valuations potentially of our properties and our pension assets as we get more information about the kind of economic. Position later in the year. So obviously, we've got until November where those accounts will come back to you. And it may be that we we have to reflect either some movements in those valuations if we have additional information to base those. if we have additional information to base those on. Or we may be referencing that there is continues to be a significant degree of uncertainty in those in those valuations. But this note is really about highlighting all of those significant areas to the readers of the accounts.
Yeah. Thank you, Hannah. I'll just look around for any other comments from from members. Not seeing any. So to to summarise this item, what I would say is thank you. I think the 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 narrative report is very useful. I think it shows, I think the 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 sheets show that we have been using reserves. We have established where that minimum level is. They won't last forever. The medium term picture for finances is obviously an unknown and a difficult situation for us to square away as as a council moving forward. We've got we we've taken, you know, a assertive approach as a council in investments so that we can deliver services. We have structures in place and policies in place to monitor and control those. We've set aside prudent balances to cover to cover those. We've earmarked reserves for that. And 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 so I I think that the Hannah and the team have have done this statement of accounts, the due diligence that it requires and and we, I think, note the challenges that the the finance team will face in the year ahead. So if there are no other points, I think that we can conclude that item. Okay. Thank you very much. So we will move on to item eight, which is the external audit plan. And that is both the marks here today to 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 support us with that. So if I hand over to the marks, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. So I'll run you through our audit plan, but pick up the question from councillor Shamira first. So our audit plan is designed to set out how we can get sufficient assurance to issue an audit opinion. That audit opinion covers the whole of the financial statements and gives assurance that they represent a true and fair view at the thirty first of March. And a true and fair view uses the concept of materiality. And for materiality, we're using three point four million pounds. So in essence, we're saying that anything above three point four million pounds would cause us an issue. Anything below three point four million pounds, we are relatively comfortable with. But in terms of errors, it is cumulative errors above three point four million that we're interested in. So we design our audit procedures to reduce the level of error to an acceptable amount. So we would test pretty much every single page of that set of accounts as part of our programme. Having said that, our programme does focus on where we think there is specific risk of error coming through and therefore leading to a potential error within the financial statements. And that's set out on pages two hundred and eleven and two hundred and twelve of your pack today, and they are the audit risks. So we have audit risks around management override, where management could, if they so wished, override the controls inherent within the financial systems to get a better result than they should. And we test for those to make sure that is clearly not the case. We have a specific new significant risk around the new financial system that's been brought into play partway through the year. Clearly, if you're moving data from one I T system to another, there's potential for it not to be transferred completely or at the correct amounts. And then the new structure operating sufficiently well for the production of the accounts at the year end. So we need to test for that. And then we have specific risks around kind of the big ticket items on the balance sheet, which you've had some discussion about. So property, plant and equipment valuations, the pension valuation and the consolidation of the group account, which is N R L. All of those potentially have an impact on our ability to give that opinion in November. We then have a couple of value for money risks around the commercialisation agenda, which is the governance structure for Norwich Regeneration Limited. And indeed, the medium term financial plan, picking up some of the points that the Chair has made in the last agenda item, making sure all of the arrangements to support those. And then reporting them appropriately in the annual governance statement, which you've already covered, are appropriately documented. COVID nineteen gives us a significant additional risk factor this year. One that's not been seen before in local government accounts. And therefore, we have specific areas of consideration around property valuations, around pension valuations and around the council's ability to operate as a going concern going forward. So in terms of property valuations, you rely on an expert to give you your property valuations, which Hannah has recorded in the accounts. The valuers are saying that there is a material uncertainty over those valuations because of market activity at the thirty first of March. And therefore, we need to pay specific consideration to that statement and whether we believe that the valuations they have provided are the best estimate at that point in time. Similarly, the pension fund liability is derived from an incredibly complex actuarial model, which relies on asset values at the pension fund, which is Norfolk Pension Fund. And clearly, those asset values are at the thirty first of March and clearly very volatile market the thirty first of March. And we need to ascertain sufficient assurance over the pension fund assets which drive the actuarial model, which gives you your net liability that Hannah has already talked about. And then in terms of going concern, it is a specific consideration for all auditors. And our going concern consideration is for twelve months from the audit opinion dates. That would be in November. And clearly, within that twelve months covers two financial years, so both twenty twenty one and twenty one twenty two. And the local government settlement hasn't been announced yet for the second part of that. And clearly, when you're under financial pressure to the extent that Hannah has set out in the current year and twenty twenty one, and you have no certainty over your future grant settlement in twenty one twenty two, there becomes a consideration of whether going concern becomes a reality or not. So we've asked Hannah to do a detailed going concern assessment on behalf of the council, which we will consider and report on. And clearly, that does link through to the council's medium term financial plan. So all in all, it is quite a big audit year, one that is not usual with a specific set of circumstances which bring their own risks, which need us to perform a series of audit procedures to get back to that point, which is giving you as a committee assurance that those accounts do provide a true and fair view of the council's financial position at the thirty first of March. Happy to take any questions on the other forty six pages of the audit plan, but I think hopefully that's answered councillor Shamira's question at the beginning, but hopefully go through anything else, Chair.
Thank you, Mark. I see that councillor Driver has indicated and councillor Sarmazy will follow councillor Driver.
Thank you, Jake, and thank you, Mark, for the report. Can I just ask why you have got more expertise than the expertise who are valuing? I mean, if you've got a value who say he's an expert and he's saying that's worth ten million pound, how do earnest young say no, you're not, it's only worth five? Which you you which you were saying that you were going to go in and check all these expert figures and stuff like this. I mean, what experts have we got in earnest youngs against the experts who have already done it?
Your management expert is only as good as the instructions that Hannah and the team give them to base the valuation on. And clearly, they are using a set of data that they derive as a company. We're not saying that's wrong, but we need to gain.
What data would you use instead to say that was completely different?
We would use market indices, we'd use our expert knowledge of specific sectors and previous valuation models.
Where do I find them?
There are general ones available on the website via numerous experts, but we have our own internal ones that we would rely on.
Would I suppose, Mark, to suppose that obviously if the work that you undertake comes back with radically different figures to the the ones that the council have experts have arrived at, then that is the point of of where a conversation would happen between yourselves and the officers to try to understand how how you've arrived at such differences. Would would that be right?
That would be right, and it's probably worth taking a step back. Our job is not to prove that the accounts are wrong. Our job is to prove that there's we can gain sufficient assurance that they are correct. And if you're being told on the one hand it's worth ten million pounds, I need to know that that ten million pounds shouldn't be eight million pounds or twelve million pounds. It's the same as selling a house and then the estate agent comes around and tell you your house is worth half a million pounds and the first person through the door offers three hundred thousand pounds. Clearly, your house isn't worth half a million. So you get that every single day in normal transactions. And my job is to get sufficient assurance that the value that Hannah has on her balance sheet is the right value.
Okay, can I just ask one more about the risks you were saying about management as well? And you you look into fraud with cash payments and stuff like this. Can I can I ask is this is this common practice in councils all the all the country or do you find this in council accounts every year or? I mean, I just wonder why you were looking into, I don't know, you find a really big risk. I mean, is it quite common?
So I think the key is it's a risk. It's a risk in every set of accounts that anybody audits in the world. And you've only got to look at examples in the press in the last month that it does happen. Management do override controls to benefit their financial reporting position. The instances occurring in the public sector are limited, but it does happen and I have reported on it. And you do find it. And clearly, we need to provide you as an audit committee with assurance it hasn't happened, not proactively go out to find that it has happened, but clearly, anybody can override a control at any point in time.
Thank you, Mark, for that explanation. I I will come back to you, Keith, if you have other points to raise, but I'll let other councillors in at this point. Councillor Sarmazy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you ever so much for all of that information. I I just wanted to ask you a couple of sort of process questions, if that if that's okay. You talk about the new financial system and it's about an electronic system where you're moving information from one system to another. Which must be a nightmare, actually, to make sure that all gets done accurately and 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 it must take a lot of attention to detail. I would a process like that take? That's the first thing I wondered. And secondly, I wondered how much, if you can gauge, has all the diverted attention into the COVID nineteen response affected that process and therefore the timeliness of it? I just wondered that as a kind of, I was trying to imagine in my head what it would be like to even undertake something like that. Thank you, muting now.
So I assume Hannah will answer that?
In terms of, so we went live with our new finance system back on the first of November. I'm trying to think now, I think probably that project has been at least two years in in the duration leading up to that. It is absolutely a a large undertaking in terms of setting up the new finance system, working out how the sort of charter of accounts is going to to pan out and and migrating all of that information, at least two years' worth of information from our previous financial system. So absolutely, a lot of planning and preparation went into that process.
Thank you, Hannah. Do you have a follow up on that?
So has that been done now then? Is that all complete? Is everything now been shifted over? We're happy that it's been checked off and it's accurate. Is that is that right?
So from our side, yes, all of that information has been moved across. We're happy from our side that we've we've done all the checks and balances on it. And it's been operating the new finance system for the last, where we are now, seven months, eight months.
So the COVID nineteen wouldn't have interfered with any of that process then?
No, so we we migrated earlier, it's sort of late half of two thousand and nineteen. So that was all in place pre-COVID. And now obviously, what the auditors are having a look at is just, you know, going across that process that we've we've done and making sure they're happy with all of that data transfer and how we're now mapping all of our financial data into the accounts.
Okay, but it's still down here as a red risk because we've still got that that kind of piece of work to do to complete, to make sure that that is all running through as it should do, kind of thing.
Yes.
I know that sounds like a very basic question, so I do apologise if I'm wasting important committee time with very basic questions. But it's just, I I just was curious about that. So thank you very much. I'm muting now.
No, absolutely. Just to pick up on it, this is obviously the external audits work that we're looking at here and it is the risk that Mark and his team are identifying. So you're absolutely right to raise it. Hannah's discussed the procedural actions. And so I think working with what you've said, councillor, and so turning it to Mark, could you just elaborate a little more, Mark, on on how you're actually going to be testing this so so that we get that that assurance that we needed? Then I'll be taking councillor Shamira.
Okay, sure. So we can use a suite of I T data analytic procedures to assess what was in the old system. And then has that been transferred to the new system one hundred percent? And therefore, we would get assurance that all the transactions that we would have had in the old system are in the new system. And then we will test the the structure of the new system to make sure it allocates all the costs and the income in the right way to be able to drive the set of statements that are in front of you today. So it's a relatively short piece of work in overall terms, being driven by the data and new I T applications to be able to give us that assurance, rather than having to test kind of individual transactions like we would have maybe two, three years ago.
Thank you, Mark, for that explanation. I'm letting councillor Shamira, followed by councillor Stuteley.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much for your earlier answer there, Mark. Could I just ask about, I think it is on that page, two hundred and twelve, about the where you basically say it's no change in in risk. And yet the comments and details are on the the other side of of that, talking about these are very complex issues, for example, in accountancy, the land and buildings. You you talk about, for example, that the is a complex area of accounting with regards to N R L. The the issues of why there isn't any change in risk or focus, for example, on the valuation of land and buildings and of group accounts in relation to N R L, please. So I would have thought COVID nineteen, obviously, and the the impact that that then has on the the N R L will have potentially changed your focus or your your risk view on on those particular items.
Okay, so that is comparing the risk designation that we have this year compared to last year. So in broad terms, the risk is comparable to the risk last year. There is always going to be a risk around those three areas because they are the biggest items on your balance sheet. In terms of designation, a significant risk is one that is going to be material in impact. So we'd have a potential for being wrong by greater than three point four million pounds and is likely to happen. An inherent risk, which are the ones on page two hundred and twelve, would have a material impact, i.e. greater than three point four million pounds, but is not likely or to happen, or we're not expecting it to happen. So the risk is less. So it could happen, but we're not expecting it to happen. So elements of COVID are having an impact. But clearly, as councillor Driver said, you are employing an expert. Management relies on that and we're going to test check their figures. So we wouldn't expect necessarily for there to be that higher risk that an error would be prevalent. And the same for group accounts. You're only you're consolidating from N R L's signed stated accounts into your own set of accounts. You're just moving one set of numbers and adding them to your numbers to get group numbers. So it's that consolidation process that is the risk, rather than anything happening in N R L. That's a different box that N R L's accountants and auditors will have a view on. So our risk is, are you bringing in the right figures and adding them to your figures correctly?
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mark. And and just to pick up on that, that distinction of of N R L being in that separate box and it does have its own auditors is part of the reason why that I feel strongly that we need more scrutiny and and internal audit of of that company so that we know that it is following the procedures of the council closely. Let's in councillor Ian Stuteley.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for this report. I'm interested in the fees set out in appendix A on page two hundred and forty six. I wondered if we could have some background, please, to where we are with fees prior to this financial year and why there is proposed for a substantial increase. There's there's no figure put on it in this particular document, but there is, there's a there's a figure on the hundred and page hundred and fifty seven, which is a note about the external audit fees. So a little bit of background, please.
Certainly. So the audit fees are set by the regulator, so public sector audit appointments. And they haven't reviewed the basis upon which they were set for a number of years. And in the intervening period, there've been significant changes to the audit world, including the level of expectation on external audit, the level of assurance that stakeholders wish it. including the level of expectation on external audit, the level of assurance that stakeholders wish it to provide, and additional regulatory pressures upon which we have to both test and then report. And in addition, the number of risks we see in audit plans of councils, especially when you consider the commercialisation agenda that a number of councils are going down, which just brings in a number of additional risks, which weren't baked into the base fee, which PSAA set. So in order to do an audit of the magnitude for both Norwich and other councils, the audit procedures required are incredibly extensive. And in order to do that audit, a fair fee is significantly higher than the scale fee set by PSAA. So we have put forward to Hannah for discussion what we think that fair fee is. Hannah and I are discussing that. And it will be PSAA's role at some point to opine on whether that fair fee is the right fee or not.
Can I just come back on that? And just can you confirm though that you're under a contract at the moment with city council for the fees that we've had prior to this financial year? And I'm looking really for justification for changing the contract that you're currently under.
It is not the contract that is changing. Our contract is to provide an audit opinion. Under code of audit practice, the fees had nothing to do with us. They're set by the regulator, as we said.
Okay, thank you for that. So therefore, the negotiations between yourselves and Hannah at City Council at the moment, what form are they taking, please?
So I have written to Hannah, setting out our proposal, following a discussion that we had about the high level rationale for why a change is needed. And Hannah has a number of detailed line items that support that. And Hannah and I will have ongoing discussions over the summer when she had a chance to recover from all the financial reporting requirements of COVID-19. And we've gone through our audit and then that will be taken forward with the regulator, as I said.
I think at that point, we'll let Hannah in, but just to say that councillor Driver and councillor Giles have indicated, I'll take them after Hannah.
You just add to what Mark said. Obviously, we're not alone as, as a council in seeing a, a potential increase in our fees. And along with the other Norfolk authorities, we have written a joint letter to PSAA to understand their position. As, as Mark said, obviously, they are the kind of the contract holder and they set the fees. So we have written to them, seeking some clarification from them in their role as to what they see as an appropriate increase. Obviously, we're, we're looking at our very small piece of the jigsaw. They should be able to see the full picture. And so we're hoping for some additional guidance or response from them. That will inform those, those type of discussions with Mark.
But thank you, Hannah. I'm going to let Keith in, in just a second. But just to say, obviously, I've been following this as well. And, you know, at the same time, you know, the, 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 the deal that has been negotiated, obviously, i- is, is a good value deal for, for the council. But clearly, it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's an unsustainable amount of money to produce the work that needs to take place. Where I feel, feel the, the problem and the blame is, is with the PSAA who have effectively, you know, washed their, their hands of responsibility in tackling this problem that's been raised by auditors. And we were setting a fair fee. We don't want to overpay at Norwich City Council. But we, you know, at the same time, you know, we need to pay proportionally for the, for the work that, that takes place. And the, the body that sets this is just simply not, not doing that. And it's, it's no fault of EY to, to need to negotiate with council. And it's, it's no fault of council to negotiate aggressively for, 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 for its own in, income. But if I let in councillor Driver at that point.
Yeah, I just want to come into this. Mark, Mark will know that all our AGMs, the Audit Committee, that I always ask if we're actually giving you enough money? And do you need extra days to do the report? And every year, early judges come back and say, yes, you are. We've got the right amount of days and you're giving us the right amount of money. Now, for some unknown reason, that, that seemed to be that other councils, especially some in Norfolk as well, and some of the, and this is what came off your person at our last meeting, said because their accounts are not going in on time, you're spending more time on other councils to get them up to standard. And that's why you need to charge everyone else more increase to get everyone else back on top. So where a council like Norwich was paused right, right, with the start with, when we actually came up to a goods, what was sent, actually, now, but I think we should have been a better one than that. But where we now actually come up to a decent standard and you don't need to spend that much time on our accounts, which you actually said at, at our AGMs, that you've got enough money and you've got enough time to do it. And then suddenly you come out and want to increase it near enough double. That seemed like, seemed to me that we're being penalised by other councils, especially in Norfolk and Suffolk around our area, which I hate to say, which are not Labour controlled. And they're, and they're making a, making a fool of other councils and doing the work properly. Is that anything to do with it, Mark?
That's not anything to do with it. And I think you're confusing external audit with internal audit because I have never provided this committee with those assurances because I've never said I need X number of days or X number of pounds to do my audit. I will do the audit and provide my audit opinion with whatever resources I need to give a true and fair opinion. Apologies, I wasn't at the previous meeting, but we have a number of overriding audits that has no impact on Norwich City's audit. The fee that we're talking about is to do the minimum amount of work to give an audit opinion. Anything in terms of increased risk has an increased fee. And clearly, any audit that is still ongoing has a number of audit issues from previous years. And the additional fee for those bodies will be significant as a result of that additional work required. Everything is, everything is proportionate and your audit, as you say, has gone well in the previous years. The increase in fee now is to get to a new base for doing that minimum level of work to give an audit opinion.
Okay, so have we now put Ernest Youngs into a risk situation and say he, they want to charge us more money? And we've got to look at that?
Yes, that is the summary.
Okay, thank you for raising that point, councillor Driver and the answer, Mark. The next indication is from councillor Adam Giles.
Thank you, Chair. And I know, looking at the minutes from the last meeting and from my own recollections, that, I know that Hannah says that the council has written to the PSAA about our concerns about the increased fees. But there was also recommendations that yourself as Chair and the Cabinet would write to the Secretary of State as he obviously has a political responsibility for regulating these matters and regulating the PSAA. And I wondered if that had happened and if so, whether we'd had a response on that matter.
Thank you for raising that, councillor Giles. Yes. As you'll see detailed in the, in the next item on the agenda, that action has not been taken forward. When we were due to sit initially, which would have been earlier in the calendar year, pre, pre the changes we've implemented for COVID, I took the decision that it wasn't relevant to send that letter at that time and spoke with a few, few members of CLT around that subject. I may have spoken with councillor Driver via email on that as well. Now, I do not, I do not disagree with putting those letters as the committee has requested. And I'm quite happy for those actions to be taken forward based upon the opinion of councillors in this meeting now. So perhaps before we move on, we, and I'll, I'll take a point from Ian, from councillor Stuteley in, in just a moment. But I'm quite happy to just put to the vote now that those letters are again issued.
If I can just come back quickly, Chair.
Yes, councillor Giles.
I thi- I think it's entirely appropriate that we didn't raise concerns about the, the extended deadline for the external audit to take place in, in, in circumstances of what we've seen with the pandemic. However, I think the aspect relating to the fees and the impact that's going to have on us long term does still, yeah, is still relevant. And, and my proposal would be to, to write to the Secretary of State, both the Chair and Cabinet on, on the increase in fees and, and leave the, the extended deadline for the completion of the external audit for this year, given the circumstances.
Yep, so that, that, that is a recommendation's put forward. Do I have a second for that recommendation? Yep, councillor Stuteley, councillor McCarthy, so that is seconded. Can I ask the committee now, before we take the recommendation as is, is that would the committee desire that both myself and the, and the Cabinet not only write to the Secretary of State, but also to the PSAA directly as well, the people who actually set the fees? I'm going to let the Jackie in at this stage and then I'll take Ian's point, but I had nods on that point. Jackie.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you that you've got the cabinet member here present for resources.
Excellent, yes. Councillor Kendrick is in the room. Councillor, do you, do you concur with the decisions here? And are you happy to write also alongside myself to, to both the Secretary of State and the PSAA?
Can you, yes, can you hear me? Yes, indeed, very much so. I very much have taken on board what people have said and I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made.
Thank you, councillor Kendrick. So we've had councillor Giles put the motion. Councillor Stuteley has seconded. And we are, and I had nods for the writing to PSAA, PSAA as well. So if we just take a formal vote on sending those letters, all in favour, raise your hand. Yep, and, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so we've, we've picked up on that point, councillor Giles. Thank you. Councillor Stuteley is indicating.
All right, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just, just a final point on that. Thank you to councillor Giles for putting that forward. I, I was going to do the same. But just, just for the, for the minutes of this meeting, I'd, I'd like to just say that we should support the council in robustly objecting to the PSAA proposal for increased fees. And from my point of view, I don't think a company with a global turnover of 36 billion in 2019 is not going to be able to absorb these fees. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stuteley. That is duly noted in the minutes, I'm sure. Are there other members wishing to speak upon this item? Just looking for indications and there is none shown at the moment. And so I would like to say, first of all, thank you very much, Mark, for, for, for putting this together. I, I would, you know, we've covered a lot of the points around the audit risks, an area of focus. I think, you know, you've, we've identified through different items on the agenda, through discussion today, how those risks are, are being amplified. And, and you've also made clear, Mark, how, how it is about you, you testing the validity of the work that's taken place. So that, that's appreciated. What, what I would, you know, I would draw attention to small items, you know, a few items like, well, mainly, when we've touched upon group accounts and, and touched upon COVID impact. I mean, the, the other area that we've not discussed in, in great detail is always the value for money, which sort of starts on page 225. And, and there, you know, in, in the last paragraph there, there is also a mention of, of the impacts of Brexit. We will fit and, and, and how it impact, and how its impact will feature on operational risk registers. So, you know, that, that's, that's an important point, I think, worth picking up. Over on the page 226, you've, you know, we've got details there of commercialisation and obviously of the financial resilience there. And so, you know, the, the work that EY will be undertaking will be the, the consideration of the council's commercial property strategy to ensure it's in line with current guidance. So just, 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 so, yeah, so I mean, that's obviously, so Mark, that's obviously in, in terms of, of guidance. But that, but that, but, you know, just for a point of clarity, that, that's not actually looking at the, the risks associated with the policy. It's more that it's a compliance exercise.
That bullet point is a compliance exercise, certainly. But there will be work around the scrutiny of the decisions made by NRL and how council had oversight of that, as part of that work.
Excellent. And I mean, th- this is, you know, I think that's a very key piece of work that you'll, you'll be doing. You know, that, you know, we, we have had, we have raised concerns as an audit committee around those, those elements in the past. And any lessons that can be learnt from that, from the work that you undertake can only help inform the council in, in its work moving forward so that we don't have to, as we saw in the statement of accounts, set aside additional four million pounds for the, for the risk of the loan failing. And obviously, the, the point under that is the financial resilience, is the medium term financial strategy. Hannah has kindly detailed how that is a near impossible thing to put together with any coherence, if I, if I'm right in understanding that, because of the, 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 the lack of detail around settlement and things of this nature. Mark, could you tell us a little bit more about the work that you'll be doing there and, and why that's a focus?
Sure. So I think it's about understanding what Hannah's model is and testing the assumptions that Hannah's used for both spend in future years and income in those future years and how sensitive are they to particular movements? And what elements of it are certain and what elements of it are predicted? So what are you predicting in terms of local government settlement? Are you expecting a flat rate increase, decrease? With COVID, now you've had car parks have been out of action for four or five months, when you're expecting them to come back up to your 100% capacity that you've had in prior years? And how are you factoring all of that through in sign, in terms of the next three, four, five years of medium term financial plan? Alongside, at what rate would you need to use reserves to compensate for any lack, loss of income or greater expenditure? And therefore, how resilient are your reserve balances over that same time period? And as Hannah set out, she's set a minimum level for her general fund balance. How much is that risk of being depleted below that minimum level? And therefore, what kind of risk do we have?
Thank you for that detail there, Mark. Again, I, just to highlight that, I think that's a really important piece of work. I mean, the, the council is under pressure to maintain services through, through, through generating income and, and, and those income streams, if they are impacted and the assumptions that we make, they, they need to be robust assumptions so that we can balance our accounts moving forward. Just, just, just to go slightly back onto commercialisation for, for, for just a second. Obviously, there's kind of two facets to that. You have obviously NRL, which is, which company there, which is delivering houses to the market. We also have our, you know, our commercial investment strategy. A lot of, we, you know, we've massive amounts of borrowing in that. Again, that's going to be highly stressed under the, the, the COVID situation that we're in. And there is obviously a, a number of assumptions that are based upon those finances. So could you just detail a little bit more about how you're going to kind of stress test tho- those assumptions?
Sure. So most of the assumptions are around yield in terms of income flows from the various properties in which the council is invested and they're in different parts of the country. So again, some of the analysis that our experts can provide are what are the market indicators in that part of the country? Are they seeing stable income flows or rental flows from such properties? And therefore, is your yield that you've got reflected in your medium term financial plan realistic or not? And what would a half a percent, 1%, 2% change to that yield have in terms of income? And therefore, when you factor that through, what does that impact in terms of the medium term financial plan? So they're all interlinked. And when you're taking out borrowing as well, and you've got borrowing at a flat rate of interest, which is certain, and income isn't certain, you've got a quite a complex calculation building up upon which you're going to need some assurances over. So it's putting all those pictures or pieces of the jigsaw together to get the overall picture that's important.
Yep. Thank you, Mark, for, for highlighting that. I mean, just, just to say that, that, that's all really crucial work that they, EY will be undertaking on our behalf to, to, to make sure that we are, you know, filling the assumptions correctly so that we can balance the books. And that value for money work, if that obviously consists of additional fees for that to undertake, you know, I see that as a direct correlation to the income that that generates. Rates that should be understood in the modelling for those income streams, the additional work that that requires and so on. So that makes perfect sense to me. So are there any other points on the external audit plan that people would like to raise, residents and councillors would like to raise? I'm not seeing any indication. And, Mark, is there anything further you would like to say before we move on?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will conclude that item there. Thank you very much for joining us today. So the final item on the agenda today is item nine. I think this will be a very quick agenda item for councillors to be aware of, I assume. This is a report that the committee has put together. Jackie has helped support the committee in help structuring this based upon the minutes of meetings that we've had last year. Both myself and councillor Driver have been consulted on this document. And so, yeah, so I'm happy with the document. I see councillor Driver indicating. Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. Just on item seven in the report, can I just say that we do value the Ernest Youngs and stuff like that and what they do for us for value for money? We believe it is value for money, but what we might put in there next year won't be something completely different. Is that true, Ben?
Yeah, I mean, that's an absolutely fine opinion to have, to attach to the previous item, councillor Driver. And I think Jackie has duly noted that. So thank you, councillor. So turning back to item nine that we're currently covering, as I said, myself and councillor Driver have covered this item. Members have had an opportunity to read the report. Are there any observations or are the committee happy to take this item as is? So any indications from councillors wishing to speak or comment? I see none. So I take this item as accepted on behalf of the committee. Yep, I see nods around the room. So we can conclude that item today. That's item nine concluded. And so that also, again, draws us to the end of today's Audit Committee meeting. I'd like to thank members for attending and also officers for their support today. Thank you very much.